Okay. Good afternoon, everyone. This is the Wednesday afternoon meeting, a work session where the Board of County Commissioners likes to get citizen and staff involvement. There's a lot that goes on and it's always a good thing if we can all find out as much as we possibly can so we can make good judicious decisions. Speaking of judicious, we have some judges in the courtroom, pardon me, that's not your hearing aid, it's, it is I who's the problem. Today, we have on the agenda juvenile detention and probation, they're going to come and explain to us how they operate and how extensively they operate. So with that, let me turn it over to, is it Hothead that will be doing it? If you'd like, you can go up there too.
Oh, Amber, Amber, you could just hold off a little, thank you.
Well, good afternoon, Commissioners and members of the public. George Moya, Juvenile Court Administrator. So yes, today we are here to
If you would take just a moment, I'm going to interrupt you just if there's some clarification required, could you explain your job as a court administrator?
Yes, sir. My job as a court administrator is pretty much to see the overall and oversight of both probation and detention. I tend to call it, you know, youth services center because both departments, as major as they may be, they play, both play an integral part into our juvenile justice system. So I typically not try to piecemeal each and keep them in their own silos more as a, as a big juvenile justice system with two different gears working, working the system. So yes, so my main role is complete oversight.
Thank you.
So Commissioners, today we have a presentation for you. And the intent here is to give you that overview. I have a lot of data as well that I, that I was able to come up, the team and I were able to come up with. If there's any data that, that you may not see there, please let me know, we can go back, go back, roll up our sleeves and look at the data and present that to you. So in case there's anything missing here, we would gladly be able to go back and try to obtain that information for you. So if we may, can we get that presentation up, please? And next slide, please. So we'll begin with the probation side of things. Next slide, please. Our probation department has just variety of functions and responsibilities from court services to schooling, evidence-based programs to mental health support. Our probation counselors have office work, field work and court responsibilities. And our administrative staff pretty much are the cohesiveness, the glue that keeps all the operations and processes happening. As you'll see in that, in that slideshow there, we have from therapeutic courts, we have two different type of therapeutic courts for us is SUD, substance use disorders, and one specifically for mental health. We also have a variety of evidence-based programs. What you'll notice on that is that we have some in-house programs that we do while one functional family therapy is really much a professional services contract that we do with an outside provider. With that, we've learned that with evidence-based programs, we want to have total responsibility for it so that we are intimate to our service delivery of the program and knowledge of the program so that we're better equipped to continue that conversation as we're helping youth and families. Whereas in the past, we've had professional services contracts and we would contract the service out and there was that disconnect sometimes that we would get, you know, youth and families were talking one thing and what they were learning while we were pretty much out of the loop. And so we've learned from that and we've done that more in-house. And what I mean by in-house is our juvenile probation counselors actually run the programs and they are evidence-based, which means they have to get certification and training and they have to keep that certification and training in order to keep that status. Because with evidence-based programs, program fidelity and the service delivery, it has to be impactful and so the training must be there. We also have a promising program that is not evidence-based, that is our individual alternative choice training program, that's also known as IACT, that's also in-house, that's a promising program because we don't have enough evidence on that for research purposes to suggest that there is a bang for your buck in terms of the funding for it and the impact, the overall impact and the output that you're going to get from the service delivery of that program. We also have our diversion program. That is a big program for us because a lot of referrals that we get may not necessarily go to court and go to charging and really diversion program is just that divert youth from a juvenile justice system to try to get them out of the system, try to instill services and go into contract with them just to see if we can get them out of the system. We do cover some emancipations, although not many of them. As mentioned before, we do have some schooling, that's our transition school, that's run through ESD 112 who comes in and we have services both in detention and out of custody, which is the transition school piece. As you've heard from us last week through our workshop, we also have mental health, a mental health clinician is Mr. John London, who is our mental health clinician and he pretty much is stretched thin from both departments, from both probation, detention and even with families and youth that come to our system looking, look, looking for some help and guidance, even though they may not be involved in any way, shape or form, they may just walk through the doors asking for some assistance and help and guidance that we could help them out with sometimes and/or connect them to our community. Next slide, please.
On that previous slide?
Yes.
Do you actually have people that would walk into the their office and say, I need help?
Yes, we do. Yeah, we'll have parents come in and the parents that we typically see are parents that you'll eventually start seeing at potential at-risk youth programs, which, you know, they are having issues with their child. You know, they're out of control in their, in their view, they're not listening, they're not paying attention to house rules, maybe not going to school and maybe dabbling with some substance use. So to them, they're out of control and they need some assistance because their kid is not really following home rules. They'll come to us as kind of like, hey, what can I do? What services can you provide?
So as a walk-in, I could end up in a diversion program?
No, a diversion program would, you know, unfortunately, someone would have to break the law, a kid would have to break the law, right? And there would be some sort of police report that gets generated, they may not go into custody right away because it may be a low level like misdemeanor and they will just release the youth to the parent and say, hey, by the way, you're going to get probably some charges in the mail based on this incident. I have to submit my report and the prosecutor may choose to file charges. And what they will do is the prosecutor may end up getting that police report, they'll read it, they'll understand the diversion law that they're eligible for a diversion, they're a first-time offender and it's a misdemeanor, in which case they will send that diversion to our department and then we have the work of getting in contact with those families and saying, we received a diversion in regards to this case number from this date. And we start that conversation.
On this particular slide, you will be drilling down into, into all these items on the slide?
Yeah, we'll probably, yeah. I have more data than I do specifics, but if you have questions about that, by all means.
Okay. I may, I may, no, I will interrupt you again, it's just foregone conclusion.
It's quite all right.
I know that numbers are not very high in, in custody. What kind of numbers can you share with us about each of these categories? How many, how many of your charges are actively involved with the safe court and you know, any of those things, or are you planning to go through those?
Yeah, we're planning to go through those too.
Okay, all right.
But if you need to know like the numbers, I can give them to you ahead, but if you want to proceed with the presentation, we do have essentially five major dockets that we, that we have in juvenile court. As you can see, we have our offender docket, dependency docket, at-risk youth docket, truancy and therapeutic courts. We're essentially having nearly court every day depending on, on the docket. We're also something that you won't see up in the slideshow are just, you know, conflict cases or trials that you won't see here, but those may be run on days that we may not be having an actual docket on that day.
In all of these, you've got OPDs involved?
All of these have parties to a case, yes, so the offender docket does have like OPD involved, dependency case has not only OPD, they have a lot more parties to one dependency case, the attorney general's office, you may have a child advocate and so on and so on, so. Yes, we have other professionals involved, yeah. And so in the case of truancy, we have schools that come by and report to the court in terms of their truancy petition that they filed.
I was under the impression that truancy was, had been demoted I was under the impression that truancy was been demoted or taken off the table a few years ago, not that long ago.
Yeah, well, not only just, well, truancy and at-risk youth, the big Senate Bill fifty-two ninety is the one that really made an impact to truancy and at-risk youth and chance even dependency cases for youth that were in dependency. Those were our civil cases and the big impact to that, that they should be not, that they shouldn't be put into detention. Especially mixed with other offenders who may be in detention. And so fifty-two ninety really put a halt to that. It started with dependency, moved to truancy and then at-risk youth is your last one. As of twenty, July first, twenty twenty-three, there was no, no way we could put a, a youth in custody just solely on at-risk youth behaviors.
Prior to that, they were held. Okay.
Correct. And even if they went to detention, there was purge conditions, meaning you know, you would go into detention, but if you write a three-page paper on this particular subject matter, then that gives you your ticket out. And it was a kind of a lesson learned and going back to the court and revisiting the document and talking about what the document, what it meant to them. Yeah.
And it must be effective because you don't have very many left, right? I'm being a little sarcastic.
Next slideshow, please.
That's a good answer.
Okay, and we'll start right, right into the numbers. And again, this is just the probation side of things. We'll eventually get to the detention portion of it. These are the number of referrals we get on a yearly basis. You'll see the data from twenty eighteen to twenty-two. In looking at that data, you're going to see an ongoing trend here with the data that's going to present. And that trend is one that goes from a downward trend to really dipping into twenty twenty and twenty twenty-one. As you know, that's those were the COVID years that really put a halt to a lot of things. So even police, as you can see, these are referrals that we get, would get, let's say, for example, in twenty eighteen, we got five hundred and fifty-two. And you look at that dip to three hundred and fifteen in twenty twenty to, my eyes aren't that well, two thirty-six in twenty twenty-one. But you know, climbing out of that COVID, you know, hole, sort of say, you're looking at twenty-two now, we're starting to see those numbers climb up again. So you're going to see that trend over and over and most of the data that I'm showing here.
Do, do you have earlier data?
As of twenty twenty-three?
As of twenty fifteen?
Oh, earlier, you're saying, okay.
Earlier, yeah.
I would have to go back.
See, the reason I'm asking is really attractive to do trend analysis, but trend analysis really implies a pretty long filter there because we've got things like COVID.
Right.
And those are single sort of step function things and I, I wouldn't want to I just, my bias, for example, from twenty twenty-one to go up to twenty twenty-two. Is this a reversion to the mean? What, what was the meaning of the mean? Because I think we actually have some underlying structural problems in society where it seems like everybody thinks it's okay to shoplift, say.
Correct.
And we know in this audience that that's not acceptable. So anyhow.
So George, what percentage of these numbers are kids who actually end up in custody? Are we looking at maybe five percent of the?
I don't know the exact percent, but as we go to the other slides, we'll start seeing how if we get this number of referrals, you'll start seeing then what, what does that mean to diversion? And what does that mean to cases that actually make it to an offender docket that actually get charged? And we'll see that in the next slides. Uh, next slide, please. So these are our diversion numbers. Again, Commissioner, you know, we're using twenty eighteen. I'm also curious. I mean, I can look back and see how much data we have. At some point, there's a we reach a point where we don't have that data. And I, we'd have to go through extensive uh, means in contacting A O C or other entities to try to get that information.
I'm encouraging that as, as a new leaf, I think everybody would appreciate keeping the data. So it's a ten years from now, it's somebody in this seat asking the same question. Not a problem. Here it is.
I agree with you.
Of course, of course, one of the influences are changes in state law.
Correct.
And the law that you, you just cited fifty-two twenty or whatever it was.
Fifty-two ninety.
That was adopted, that was signed into law what year?
Pop quiz.
Two thousand nineteen, two thousand twenty?
Venture was twenty nineteen or twenty eighteen.
Right when the dip began.
Yeah. And you'll, you'll see also here, to, to your point, you know, the, the changes in legislature obviously affects what we do. Either in the positive or in the negative, either way, it affects and there's an impact to our facility. If we're looking at diversion, here's our numbers from twenty eighteen, they're growing up, then you see the same trend that dip and in twenty-two, in twenty twenty-two, you start seeing that, that uptick. And I'm curious to know about this because there's laws that have changed in regards to diversion as well. Where it used to be that you would only have one diversion, eligible for one diversion. And so now with the laws changing, now there's up to two, three diversions, depending on the county that wants to do that. Now granted, it's not for the same charge. So for example, if we, if a youth assaults their parent, assault for domestic violence and they come in and it's a legitimate diversion, they go through diversion. If they have another assault for domestic violence, they're not going to get that second diversion because it's the same type of offense. However, if they stole something from somewhere and they got a theft third charge, then that could lead to another diversion. And so I, I'm curious and I would anticipate our diversions going even a little bit higher because now we're opening the doors wider to allow more diversions to, to occur.
Yeah, and oh, it's a difficult thing for you to do. We, we all have our favorite interpretations of the data. I always appreciate someone who's in in the trenches to just say, these are the numbers. I, I, like when I ask a finance or question, they, they have a very hard time in the past anyhow, typically answering a simple question, statistically, are we spending more or less? They hand me a spreadsheet. No, I'm really asking for the big picture. So I, I really would crave any commentary on your part. And I know it's a dangerous thing, but if, because everything can be misused, anything can and will be held against you. And so I, but I, I do appreciate that even if it's on a personal level where you say it to me and say it to other commissioners, not in a public arena, it helps us sort of frame it. We're not trying to put the burden on you. It's still going to be our fault.
Don't matter. Well, what we tend to see in, at least in the juvenile world that I've, I've noticed that it's kind of a whack-a-mole, right? You, you mess with diversion and you change legislature. Well, then something changes. This may go down, but another thing is going to go up here in terms of, let's say, for example, you open up the doors for more diversions, then then you'll see that then less cases are going to actual court and criminal cases. So you know, it, it's, I'm just saying that there's, there's an effect. Once you do something here, there's an effect. We're affected somewhere.
Yeah, you know what that tells you and why I'm hot on some of these issues is my good friend Jeff Wilson was pressing legislative change for catalytic murder theft. The way I look at that is theft is theft. Why do you need a special category? And so there's, my point here is there's always a fundamental. If you whack a mole here and one comes up here, you've got a bigger problem than just an individual mole.
Correct.
And that's where we, if we were we need the opportunity to see if we can extract out of that what the fundamental problem is.
Correct. Agreed. Next slide, please. This slide is you'll, you'll see is just diversions by gender. So if we're looking at the previous slide in twenty eighteen, we had a hundred and sixty-one. While the makeup here in terms of separating them by gender, the makeup, you'll see that males far exceed the number of diversions versus females.
This is a problem. I think we need to improve the equal opportunity here.
I know that may increase.
And just to be sure, we're talking ages thirteen to eighteen? What, what are the ages?
Oh, we're talking about eleven?
Twelve to seventeen.
Twelve to seventeen.
Twelve to seventeen. And seventeen includes the entire year. So
Correct.
So you've got some transition issues.
Correct. They may be shy, one month shy of their eighteen birthday.
Got it. Okay, thank you.
Yeah, next slide, please. And these are the da- the data here is the actual amount of offender cases that went to court. So these are the cases that, you know, if we had a police referral from the prosecutor, they're no longer eligible for diversion. These are the cases that actually make it to court. So there's the numbers from twenty eighteen to twenty twenty-two. We're seeing the same trend again, over and over and over.
Is this misdemeanors and felonies?
Correct. These are all charges that make it to court. Yeah. Next slide, please. This slideshow here in particular is meant to represent the average number of youth on probation per month. So on a given year like twenty eighteen, the monthly average of youth being on probation were a hundred, a hundred youth on probation. And then you start seeing again, the same trend over and over going down, spiking back up.
When, when the numbers dropped?
I'm sorry?
When the numbers dropped pretty dramatically like they did, about forty percent. Was there a corresponding change in staffing levels?
No, to some degree, there was a reprieve because like I mentioned before, when we're running evidence-based programs, those certifications are tough. You have to have ongoing, I believe. There's three or four different certifications, Chris. There's three. They're pushing for a fourth certification per year. Not only that, that is a- also in addition to the eleven hours of continuing education for probation counselors. So there's ongoing work to be done. And when the numbers are low here, you know, and those were the COVID years again, then we have to change the way we operate and sometimes changing the way you operate. I'm sure you felt it here, Commissioners, where we felt it in the courts. Where we used to be so it was so easy to do business in person. But when you change that model on its head and everything has to be done through a Zoom or through some sort of Skype or something, the complexity changed the game. And so where it may have taken a visit of, you know, thirty minutes to get the job done. Now it may take an hour because of issues with, with the technology or it's for example, even we, because we didn't stop trying to deliver services, even our evidence-based programs through a Zoom model, which was very difficult. So you have to deal with those things too, aside from the training and the certifications.
Yeah, I appreciate that. I, I think certainly it's clear to me that the detention aspect is seven days a week, twenty-four hours a day, all the time. And that's a sunk cost. So whether you have one person or twenty in there, that cost isn't going to change. I mean, the cost will go up some, but it's minor compared to the sunk cost. How does that translate into probation? Is that also a twenty-four hour day, seven day a week?
No, no, our, our typical hours of operations are eight thirty A M to five P M. But some probation counselors are, they have an alternative schedule where they, they work nine and a half hours instead of seven and a half.
Are the probation officers on call also at all times?
Technically not, but when I say technically not, because they may have a kid that may be on probation in their caseload and there may be an issue in detention or an officer is bringing someone into detention and they need information that may not be readily available. Well, the best thing to do is call that probation counselor and say, hey, we have Johnny here and what can you tell us about this, this and that? And, and so they, they may be on call. At that point.
I tend to think of probation officers as pretty important, certainly with the youth. I, I don't know about adults, but and I, I imagine that there is a uh, relationship that builds is, is that true?
Oh, absolutely. You have to build a rapport. In order to help someone, they have to be able to trust you and you have to have that relationship. Otherwise, it's a defensive mechanism that why would I want you to help me if all you do is, oh, you know, put me in detention or you do things. So there has to be that level of response, of, of relationship that needs to happen.
So if I, if I could interview all the probation officers at some point, they would let me know, yes, they get called on a Saturday evening or a Sunday morning. And it's the same thing like being a commissioner. How many times have you been called in weird situations? Far less important in our case typically as in your case, but so is that a proper picture of the probation officer? That there's an intimacy and a separation, but and they're really on call unofficially.
Correct. Yeah.
And then on this particular chart, I don't know what to make of the numbers. The point three person bothers me because I don't know how many heart. A third of a heart, no. All jokes aside. What's the uniqueness? So if I had one person in mind, would I be able to track that person through, through each of the columns here?
But potentially, yes. So the, the uniqueness of, and you'll see point five or point three. It's mainly has, has to do with their probationary status. If you were sentenced to twelve months on supervision, then potentially you'll be there for twelve months, obviously.
So I would see, I would see that same individual if there were twelve months, certainly. Well, you're doing it by year. So I guess.
Yeah, and some of them are there maybe three months on supervision, six months on supervision. So you never do, if you're going to do data for that whole year, they're, they're only there partially because there's, there's six month. If there was only a six month uh, community supervision court order ended that one, that in that month that was accounted for and it skews the numbers a little bit. And this is why we try to do an average to get us a better idea.
Oh, yeah. I, I was only teasing about that. No, that, that's understood. But I am interested in what I would call the I'm not even sure it's applicable, recidivism. Certainly back in, in the truancy days, it would be obvious you're in and out all the time. Well, you will be, you will be talking about that a little later.
Unfortunately not. I, I can definitely get our recidivism rates. One slideshow that didn't make it, one slide that didn't make it to the slideshow. And, and that's because I hadn't done an extensive research to get the actual numbers. Recidivism is tough for us because we have to account for the last two years. Research tends to just do two years after they are done with our probation department. Let's say, for example. Now, well, let's use, let's, let's use the case of a youth who just turned eighteen. They are done with supervision. So we'll track the data in terms of two years later. We'll check up on that youth to see if they had any sort of charges. Whether misdemeanor or felony, that would account within that two-year mark after they were done with our probation department, whether there was recidivism or not. And that is something that the state runs and we get that information. I can tell you in, I believe, twenty nineteen, don't quote me, I can send you the information. In twenty nineteen, we were the county with the lowest recidivism rate, which was thirty percent, thirty percent recidivism rate of counties that had over thirty youth on supervision. So of all the counties that had at least thirty youth on supervision, we were the county with the least recidivism at thirty percent. Our neighbor to the south had over, little over sixty percent recidivism.
So statistically, was that a significant, were we significantly stronger than?
Oh, absolutely. And, and now I, I am curious to see what it looks like from twenty twenty and on. But again, we have to wait that two-year mark. Why two years? I'm not a research analyst. I don't know why they use two years. You would think recidivism is recidivism, but we use two years because at some point the research has to. you would think recidivism is recidivism, but we use two years because at some point the research has to stop and it has to get tabulated and it has to be put into a nice
Yeah.
Presentation, I guess.
I might argue with you a little bit. Yeah, the re- but I would encourage you always to collect as much data as possible. And maybe after, uh, your income tax is what's seven years?
No, I, I agree with you there. I, I think
Because for you, you, you want to know what's working and what's not. And the, the only way you know that with any of this stuff, there's so much variation that you have to have big numbers.
Correct. And, and how we know when things are working or not, and we'll go back to the evidence-based programs and that eh, eh, at a state level, they try to earmark funding for research. Because if the state is paying X amount of dollars for this program that was considered evidence-based, well, we'd like to know if it's continued, if it's continuing to have the same impact as it once did. Or has it ran its course? And we won't know that unless we have a funding for that to get actual research analysts to to do those studies and that, that's at a statewide level, not just per county. So when we tend to get reports that said, you know what? This evidence-based program doesn't have the effect that it once did. That's what happened to our, uh, aggression replacement training, our ART program. And based on that, we got rid of the program and we start anew. What is the next program that is presenting better evidence that suggests that it's making a better impact?
So I, I know evidence-based practices are that's what is used all the time, the phrase is used. And I know that, uh, typically the evidence-based research is done in larger settings to get the numbers that you have.
Correct.
Um, but what's more difficult is whether the evidence actually works in a community like ours. Um, and, and I don't, I would think that would be something that staff would always want to, to find out. When you're, when you're trying to figure out, does that program work and is it effective? But it's a lot easier just to keep citing it's evidence-based rather than the evidence base is what introduced us. But here's what the data shows. It's even working better than what the evidence in the big cities or, or not. So.
Commissioner, I would agree with you.
It probably costs money to ke- keep track of the data, I suppose. So.
Yes, and each county is different, right? Their population may be a little bit different. They may be having barriers that a certain county may not have. So I agree with you there. If, if I had it my way, there would be a research analyst in every juvenile court.
So does, uh, do, do your probation officers, um, do, do they do enough inquiry to, to discover the aces that the kids have suffered?
No, we
Do they ta- pay particular attention to the background for the kids?
We take a lot of things into consideration. So what we do at the state level, and this is statewide for all juvenile courts. Any probation counselor that goes through an academy process, they also have to go through a CMAP process, what we call the CMAP process. And that is pretty much a process by which you do a risk assessment to obtain all the risk factors and protective factors of that youth. Uh, and then you take a closer look at those risk factors to see what are the issues? What are the root problems? And, and, and knowing that, and, and it's, again, that's a validated risk assessment that we can, we have to conduct and we have a database where we just have an ongoing dialogue with, with a youth. We call it a motivational interviewing. So that we are able to extract the information that we do. So we can put it in our database and our database will give us the results based on, well, this is what the risk factors look like. These are the protective factors. So that, that's the methodology that we use in order to determine what the true factors and risk levels are. Um, and also we use some, I like to think we use common sense as well.
That's the part I like. Uh, I, I agree with certainly the first part, uh, of my colleague's statements that, that shows, uh, maybe too strong a statement is a mistrust of evidence base. I can tell you from my heavy science background that when I hear evidence-based in our arena, I actually almost have to turn my ears off because it, it sounds like garbage to me. And I, just to let you know, that's where, that's, that's the bias I have. Uh, in terms of explanations or aces, I, I, we all have that. And so um, much more focused on the common sense. Everything we do, not we, the, the you do is actually going to be a face-to-face human stuff. And so what applies to this worst person wouldn't apply to this person and so forth. And the the value is having the, the probation officers that understand that and do all that. And again, we all have reasons for why it is we do something, but that's a backwards looking thing and it helps the theoreticians.
Correct.
But it doesn't help you with that individual necessarily. It, it, I'm, I'm being very general and I realize it's arguing, argumentative. If I'm just asking people to conclude going forward is what are you going to do about it? Yes, you were dealt a rotten hand. Fine. What are you going to do about it?
Yeah. And we, we have to take the totality of the situation, right? And I mentioned earlier that probation counselors have a little bit of kind of, when I was a probation counselor, I always saw it as the best of two worlds. Where you have office work and you also have field work. So how, how else would you know what that youth is going through if you never did a home visit, if you never checked their environment, if you never went to their school and never talked to their school counselor, say, hey, how's Johnny doing? Or their teacher, how's, how are they doing in your classroom? What behaviors do you see? If you're not doing any of that, then you're just solely going on a risk assessment. And that, that is just one tool. I, I'm thinking, and I'm saying here that we have to take the totality of everything, not just, and this is where the common sense kicks in as well.
Absolutely. And that's a forward-looking one. I, I've talked to people who, they go to the house and they know it's a disaster. There's no discipline. There is no requirements, no responsibility. And you've got to cope with the end result and how can you help in that situation? Very difficult.
You know, from my experience, when I was a probation counselor, there was times where I could easily work with the youth. But I couldn't work with that parent.
Not a surprise.
And that was very difficult.
Yeah.
Because the, where the youth made strides, the parents would refuse to do services. And, and how do you help a youth? You, you just have to stick to that model and help the youth, not the parent, not the entire family, unfortunately, because they're not there as a supportive network. So then I have to find what is a supportive ne- uh, network for this youth? Is it a coach? Is it a teacher? Is it somewhere? Is it a counselor? Is it? Is it their mental health counselor? I don't know. I have to get a team going in order to have a better support unit for this individual. So.
And in that case, in that case, the street is a big element too.
Yeah.
Thank you.
The next slideshow, you'll see the actual probation youth, um, by gender. Um, again, we, we tend to see more males on supervision than we do females.
Uh, do you have a comment on that one? That's a pretty big spread.
No.
I think there's a lot of, a lot of value in there if we want it the back. And I'm not saying you, I'm just saying the community in general. And part of why we're doing this, it's recorded is we want the public to see what we're spending their dollars on. And, uh, anyhow, there, there, there's a message in there.
Yeah.
With, uh, I, I have a little bit of, of a bias on, on why it's like this. Um.
You've only been a teacher for how many years?
My hunch is that, uh, a, a lot of the kids that get into trouble are very much kinetic learners. They've got to be doing things.
Uh, they're what? I'm sorry.
They're kinetic learners. They have to be doing
Oh, yeah.
Okay, hands-on stuff. And the last twenty years, the emphasis of education has been college, book learning. And, uh, shop classes are gone. And very difficult to address the needs of those people have to, they're always moving. And so what happens when they're always moving? Instead of reading and doing paperwork, they're getting in trouble.
Yeah.
And it, it is, it is a frustration that, uh, we've, we've tended to move away in education from doing more hands-on stuff. And, you know, maybe it's a pendulum and it'll swing back, but in the meantime, we've got a lot of kids that, that, uh, in them, making other choices. And you deal with some of them and some of them don't show up on, on your watch, but it's, uh, there's a lot of destructive behaviors out there. So it's frustrating. And the other thing is you guys actually don't have custody for kids very long.
Correct.
So it's very difficult. I mean, if you're talking about a two-year drug, uh, uh,
Right.
A drug therapy program, you, you, you don't have them that long, do you?
Right.
You gotta get them started and hope the parents will be supportive and as they finish up on their own, but hardly any guarantees. I, I, I oftentimes think that the, your your folks have to combat the notion of, we're hitting our heads against the wall.
Yeah.
Try, try and try. And it's, um, you know, there, there are a lot of things that are needed that we we aren't able to provide.
Correct. And, and because we have them for such a short period of time, we, we try to really get them to be aware of the resources in our community. So that, you know, and I said earlier, sometimes it's very difficult to work with the parent. But conversely to that, there's been parents that are really good to work with and they're advocates for their children. And those are the parents that, whose children we don't see anymore. Because they've learned to go through a system and they've kind of use their community as their support network. Yeah.
I, I want to say I, I do appreciate that we're actually leaning on you, asking you questions that maybe not materially germane to to, to the, to, to the situation. But i- it is, I, I think in my opinion, really, these are very good conversations for everybody, I think, even though they, eh, eh, it's a, we're leaning on you for opinions about things and let me ask you another one then along those lines. How do you like that sliding in? Uh, is it easier to deal with one, one, uh, the females versus the males or vice versa on, in probation?
I plead the fifth.
A big pardon?
I plead the fifth on that. No, I, I'm just a joke.
Oh, oh. I, it's, if it's totally out of context, then, uh, could I lose it?
No, obviously everyone's different. And, and I, I can't say one or the other. Uh, there may be a case where it'd be very difficult and it's a very, it's a deep, it's a female that I'm working with and she's very difficult. And there'd be times where females are much easier to work with. And, and conversely with, with males, there may be some that you can work with and some that you cannot.
So, so I would translate that, uh, no, I haven't noticed any things that's, you know, there's an individual, but overall.
Correct. I, I couldn't say one over the other now. It's very, very much to that individual, especially what they would maybe going through. Because I've, I've dealt with some youth that are really tough and they put up a front and they will flat out tell you, no, I will not do that. And so how do you help those individuals? You try to be creative. You try to work other angles.
Well, the, the good thing about all this is that when we spot a, a youth problem, we know who to blame, right?
Next slide, please.
That's a good answer too.
Uh, this slideshow here is, is pretty much our at-risk youth filings. Uh, again, at-risk youth. This is, um, this is a parent-driven court program. Um, a, a child's parent may find, this is right from the RCW. A child's parent may file with juvenile court, a petition in the interest of a, of a child alleged to be an at-risk youth. Uh, these, these really start with our, the department, which the department, I mean, Department of Children, Youth and Families. When, um, going back to parents having to deal with, with, uh, youth that you know, they're children that may be out of control. And so they need advocate, advocating, they need help. This is, again, this is a parent-driven program where they come to the court asking for some assistance to empower them uh, and, and try to help their youth. And, and we don't get as much. You'll start seeing the same trend here. The numbers are low. Uh, again, this is going back to twenty eighteen to twenty-two. And you're, you're starting to see that dip in twenty-one and twenty-two. Now, not by much, it's only one number, but again, low numbers, very difficult to look at specifically.
Unlike the other ones, uh, the last point is below the, below the penultimate point.
Hmm.
Totally meaningless, but.
Yeah. Well, we'll go to the next slideshow and this is our chin's petitions and filings. These are child they need to services. So this is almost the opposite of the at-risk youth. This is more of where the, the youth needs more support because the parent may not be providing, uh, enough for them to be able to be successful, uh, in, in their life. So, um, these are very low numbers for us. Um,
How is this initiated?
So this one, um, I'll, I'll say here, the little blurb that I have, the purpose of the child they need to services program is to obtain a court order mandating temporary placement. For up to six months of a child in a residence other than the home of his or her parent. The need for the parent, the need for the placement must be based on a serious conflict between the parent and child that cannot be resolved by delivery of services to the family while the child remains at home. So situations are too difficult and it's better to have them apart and try to instill services in order to repair those, those, um, relationships. And the overall intent of child and need of services is to have a productive family. And you could, you know, that, that, that productive family. So it may require separation through placement. But overall, the, the, the intent is to get them back together through services. And our numbers are low. You, you saw in twenty twenty-one and zero, and that could have been easily through COVID and no petitions filed that year. Next slide, please. These are our truancy cases. Um, so the same trend here, you'll see that dip again, going back up. Even in twenty twenty, twenty-two, you see three hundred and fifty-five cases and that's a big spike. I am looking at this one a little bit closer because obviously fifty-two ninety had an impact to truancy cases as well. Um, and not only that, we're, we're trying to do things a little bit different in terms of our truancy case filings. Uh, the model that we had was where eh, eh, as soon as schools were able to file a truancy, they would file a truancy. And eh, just case in point, if you see twenty eighteen, we have four hundred and sixteen, if I can, sixteen, that's correct. So it, it's the schools will file and bring a, a, a student to court to try to, you know, have the court do case management from the bench and try to say, well, you got to do this, you got to do that. And uh, we're flipping that, that model on its head. Essentially what we're trying to do now is before schools are, are, are filing and trying to come to court and do case management from the bench, we want them to really have a lot more resources for youth and, and, and students. And we've, uh, have a probation counselor now helping the schools to try to uh, provide even some intervention-type services to get them early on before they come to court. Court should, really should be kind of a last resort. Uh, we should be doing a lot more services and a lot more resources before they come to the courtroom. And so even when you see in twenty twenty-one, one seventy-eight and twenty twenty-two, three fifty-five, in twenty twenty-two is when we started changing the model a little bit. And so I'm curious what twenty twenty-three is going to look like and beyond after that.
Could you define for us truancy?
I'm sorry, can you repeat the question?
Yeah. Could you define for us truancy?
Uh, yes. Uh, Washington's, Washington State Law, RCW twenty-eight A point two-two-five point oh-one-oh requires with some exceptions that all children between the ages of eight and eighteen are required to attend school every day when school is in session. Um, uh, Superior Court supports many responses to truancy, including providing resource and referral assistance for parents, students and schools to address barriers to attendance, technical assistance to schools and school districts. to address barriers to attendance, technical assistance to schools and school districts.
Okay, so by RCW, then if a kid doesn't show up to school once, he's a truant.
No, not necessarily. And and um schools in OSPI may be changing those too, because I I think it's, don't quote me on this, I I wanna say it's twenty days unexcused absences. I'm not sure what it is.
That's kind of the number I'm looking for.
Twenty days. Uh twenty days unexcused, it could be considered a truant, and that's when schools start to file truancy petitions.
And then who who brings them to your attention?
Uh, whoever's designated from each school. Each school will have their own. They used to call them truancy officers. I I don't know what they call them.
It's not the mom or dad and it's
No.
Not the neighbor.
No. It's a school representative who is in tune to all the attendance records.
So it could be a guidance counselor, it could be an assistant principal.
It it could be. It it depends on the resources of the school. Some schools are much smaller than others, so uh some school officials may wear different hats.
This is just a quick question with a strange purpose uh for Judge Basher. Has this truancy law ever been challenged constitutionally? Okay, I I should probably have asked you to step up, but I think I can just say it quickly. Uh I I asked whether there was a constitutional challenge. The answer is uh both the judges, Judge Basher and Judge capacity do not think there's been one. There have been changes, but we all know that. So uh and someone might say, why do you ask? Well, the Constitution doesn't say except for the ages between uh eight and eighteen or something like that uh on any of your rights. I'm not saying going to school is a bad thing. I just uh, yeah. Thank you.
Next slide, please. Um, this is just data on our transition school. Uh, we have transition school and that's operated by ESD one twelve. Um, it's right next to our, well, it's kind of wedged between probation and detention. Uh, transition school is out-of-custody school. It is just that, a transition. So they're in transition from one point to the next, uh meaning some of these youth who may be a truant, frequent truant, and we need a closer look and a closer watch. They may be ordered to attend transition school to come by and, you know, i- i- do some credit recovery. Some schools may be placing, team placing. Um, some youth for various reasons, they may want to place them in transition school uh to, again, do some credit recovery or or for whatever reason they may, they they think is deemed necessary for them to attend transition school. The numbers that I have provided here have been given to me by our transition school office person. Um, you'll see sixty-five GED pre-tests were administered. Forty of forty-eight of which were in transition school and seventeen in detention. Uh, forty-two GED tests were administered, thirty-one were in transition and eleven in detention. And in regards to GED, eight of seventeen students have earned a GED diploma. Um, when I'm looking at those numbers and I didn't have a chance to speak with her directly about what it meant by eight by eight out of seventeen. Obviously, they're taking pre-tests. I can only assume, and if anyone's here that can let me know, uh GED is not what you think. It may be just one test and you're done. It's a series of tests that you do in order to pass and obtain your GED. So my assumption of the seventeen students is those who truly attempted all three or four phases of that GED exam. So eight of them have earned their GED diploma.
You don't have instructors. I mean, you don't have teachers assigned anymore to juvie, do you?
Can you repeat the question again?
You you don't have teachers on staff.
We have teachers in detention uh and a teacher assistant. Uh, we also have one full uh FTE teacher in transition school. Um, we also had an assistant in transition school, but they are short-staffed and they haven't filled that position. But but yes, we do. Yeah. And then again, they're employed by ESD one twelve. Yeah.
The public display of ignorance. I still have no idea what transition school is. I I can picture that if you're in the in uh detention or like if you were at the NACL.
Hmm, no.
There there's a whole schooling that that fall through, but so what exactly?
It's basically one classroom and the best way to describe it is pretty much an alternative school. Um, a- and so it's not a school in the traditional sense. Uh, it is simply just one classroom. It's ran by ESD one twelve. They have one teacher there. Uh, we have computers there and uh we have students that come there. And and again, it's this a short-term program. Uh, this is not long-term. They're not meant to be there year after year. They're only there for a very short term, uh trying to improve their attendance, trying to improve and get some credit recovery and prove that they can go back to their homeschool. That is the end goal, for them to go back to their homeschool.
Is there the concept of a transition classroom then? So if I go to the juvenile detention center, I'll find a room where you say that's where transition school is?
Oh, yes, I can.
Okay.
I can point you there.
Yeah, I've been there. I we I you read that the carpet, but it's
Yes, yes, you're right. Yep. You know exactly where that is.
Okay.
Yeah. Next slide, please.
So wait, so everybody in detention goes goes into transition school?
No.
No.
No, detention has its own classroom. Yeah, so because they're in custody, they remain in custody. And so within the building, we have uh technically, we have two classrooms, correct? We have two classrooms and within the building. And separate from transition school, which is an out-of-custody school.
So for transition school, instead of me taking the school bus to go to school, I would take a different bus and I go to the detention center?
We've had buses that come by, yes, in the past.
Hey, my mom and dad drive me to the school?
Typically, that's what you see. And then you also see students riding a motorcycle, motorcycle, a bicycle, a bicycle, some other means, a skateboard, they come by.
And and I'm there all day?
I'm sorry?
A- a- as a student in transition school, I'll I I'll be there for an entire academic day?
Not in the traditional sense, no. I wouldn't compare that to an actual school. They don't go to the exact same amount of, they don't use the same amount of hours.
Okay, do we use the three Rs in there or what do we learn in there?
I don't know what the three R scenario is.
Reading, writing, arithmetic?
Oh. Sure.
So in the
Is the green button on? A a gr- a green light on?
There we go. Okay. So in the course of a school day, um depending on what school district they're from, ESD one twelve has worked with those school districts to be able to access their academic programs. So like, say if a kid from council school district is suspended for thirty days. Uh, they can come to transition school, still work on their council schoolwork. So then when they transfer them back to the high school or elementary school, wherever that, well, not elementary, but junior high and middle school. Um, they're just right back where they were. They didn't miss anything.
So the value of transition school is to circumvent whatever uh environmental issues are elsewhere?
Yeah. And then um and then if the kid, um so they can work on the credit recovery, if they're over sixteen, they can start working on their GED. And so if a kid is, you know, you have to have twenty-four credits to be able to graduate high school. If they're a junior and they've only got six credits to their name, it's gonna be pretty impossible for them to be able to catch up in time to graduate and walk across the stage. So um ESD one twelve has now worked on helping them get their GED. And so as you see, you know, eight of seventeen students um in twenty twenty-two were able to get their GED. Some of the kids um can start on their GED. They might go to inpatient treatment um for SUD. And so they got two of their classes out of the way for their GED. And then while they go off to substitute treatment, they can finish up their GED while they're there. Um, or if they go back to Castle Rock, they can finish it when they get back there. So lots of opportunities to finish it up once they leave our facility.
Interesting.
Yeah.
I could uh out of the hundred percent of hours that a normal person would spend going through to get a high school diploma. Uh, by that, I'm thinking grades nine through twelve. Uh, going to a G GED is how many hours?
It just depends on the person. Some kids have been floored by how much they knew. But they just never went to school. And so when they take those pre-tests, you have to score, I wanna say like a one fifty on a pre-test. And if you score one fifty on that pre-test, it's pretty much a given that you're gonna pass your GED test when you take it. So you know, you take your math pre-test and it says, yeah, you're gonna rock this. And I think you have to have a one thirty-five to pass your your GED test. And so when that kid finally hits that one fifty mark, then great, they're ready to take the GED test to pass it. Some kids can do it in a week, some might take a month. It just depends on, you know, their intellectual capabilities, I guess, how much they've really paid attention to life. Um, and they just, they're floored sometimes by what they thought they didn't know they actually knew. So it can just, I mean, we've had kids get it within a month. We've had some take three to six months.
Do do the students come up to administration and say, I wanna take the GED? Or do you advise them?
Uh, yeah, we, you know, like when I'm meeting with kids, um, we talk about how's school going for you? And like you guys mentioned earlier about being hands-on, right? They just wanna be active. They wanna get going. And it's like, yes, but you gotta get an education. You know, when you turn eighteen, nineteen, it's gonna be difficult getting a job if you don't have a GED or a diploma. And so we look at what are the alternatives, you know, for school? Um, you can do the transition school GED program. You could go to Goodwill GED program. You could do open doors at LCC, which is where you can go and work on your high school diploma or your GED, and you can work on a trade and get your welding certificate or auto mechanics or whatever. Um, so we just look at what's gonna be best for the kid and their education and help them on their road to recovery. And so we work with the transition school staff. Um, the SD one twelve staff will come and talk to the kid, whether they're in detention, if they're on probation. And families invited to come in and meet with them and just talk about what are the options? And how do you work out the transportation? How do you work out the hours, you know, and and things like that? So it's just a good way to just meet with the kid and and just help them sort that problem out.
I've been remiss here. Uh, the public has no obligation to identify themselves, but we usually ask staff, and I consider that a good thing because I want the public to know our staff.
Yeah. So yes, I'm John London. I'm the juvenile care clinician.
More slowly?
Oh, John London. Uh, I'm juvenile care clinician at Cal State Youth Services.
Okay, thank you.
Uh, next slide, please. So now we'll dive into the detention portion of the presentation. Next slide, please. Uh, this slideshow, you'll see, uh, these are pretty much all the detention facilities around the state. Um, you'll notice that most of the detention facilities are on the west side of the Cascades.
It's the humidity, I think.
What's that?
It's the humidity.
Probably. Next slide, please. So we'll
Oh, uh, go go back to that one.
Oh, sure.
You have a cou- you have a couple of counties that have two. One's a circle and the other Muslim were stars. What's the difference?
Talking about Shalan and what's the other one? They are considered CRCs. So they have both detention and a crisis residential center.
Alphabet soup. The uh, what's the politics or the thinking about the private versus county-operated?
I am not too familiar with with that world. Considering there's only one privately operated facility versus twenty detention facilities, I I can only speculate.
Okay, and the reason you outline out-of-state contracted facilities is?
Uh, those because those are neighboring, those are neighboring um detention facilities to a bordering state. In this case, one Idaho, one Oregon. So for example, I could have easily put that we, here in Calis County, we are a facility where we contract with uh outside counties in Oregon as well. Columbia County being one of them. We also contract with Pacific and Wakayakam, which are
That's a good thing, isn't it?
Correct, yes. Next slide, please. We'll dive right into the data. These are our detention admissions over the years. Uh, with the same trends. Uh, next slide, please. And these are admissions and with the separation of local youth versus contracts. So same numbers, but divided by, you know, and and separated between the amount of contracts versus our local youth.
Uh, is this only the neighboring counties? It probably is just by convenience, but it's not mandated that they have to be.
Um, that's a really good question because when I'm saying a contra- oh, you're saying
Like, could we get someone from Assotin in here? Or Columbia?
O- okay, so that's a tricky one because let's say we get a kid from Seattle. But they committed a crime and they come into our detention facility. We'll we'll see him as local because they were in our jurisdiction. They committed a crime in Calis County and they came to our detention facility. When I'm talking about a contract, it is a contract that we have with another county to hold their youth that are under their jurisdiction. So if someone in Pacific or Wakayakam, they went to court and it was determined that they needed detention. Uh, let's say, for example, Wakayakam, they would send us a youth, eh, this youth has ten days detention order. So that that's what we consider a contract. Same with Columbia County. It's a contract.
Yeah, do do we have a an implicit contract with anybody? You actually have to have an ILA or something like that?
Well, yeah, we do. We we have to have an agreement. It has to be in writing.
And we've got one with Wakayakam, Lewis, I'm sure.
Well, we had one with Lewis. We had one with Lewis while they were going through their renovation and they closed down their facility. So we contract their their youth.
Is that active still?
What's that?
Is it active still? Are are do do we still have uh kids from Lewis County here?
No, no, we don't. No. Lewis Con- Lu- Lewis County is now fully operating. Yeah, they're done with the renovations.
So in in two thousand eighteen and nineteen, I'm sure some of the contracted detentions were ICE kids. Formerly known as the
Correct. I think those numbers will still reflect some, right? Now, they didn't make up the majority at all.
Never had very many of them, but
No, not not many at all.
Yeah, we we've talked about sometimes, this goes back to sort of the economics of uh trying to have a regional, I I not sure I like the word, but it just means Wakayakam cannot afford to have a juvenile detention center. We we spend a lot and we have a lot that we could share with Lewis County, Skamania, where we could take their inmates and operate a single facility for all of them. Is that discussed that in your life?
No, not not in my world. It's not really discussed in that sense, no. Um, I we like to help each other a lot where one, let's say, you've mentioned Skamania County. Skamania County contracts with Clark County. That's their closest neighbor. So the, if there's an instance where that youth is not welcoming Clark County for whatever reason, maybe the assaulted officer's out there, they're too high risk, whatever it may be, and they may need a break, they will reach out to other facilities to say, can Calis They will reach out to other facilities to say, can Calis take or can? You know, even Lewis County or Grace Harbor or somebody else, can you help us out? And so in which cases, uh, we may help out because when we're in a time of need, we want someone to reciprocate as well. So, yeah. We'll try to be a friendly neighbor.
All right, hello, it's me again. Um, so one thing with when we have youth coming into our facility that are from a contract. Um, experiences, especially with like Lewis County. When we're working with our youth, we want to give them the best care possible and help them. Um, get that kind of care when they go back into their community. When they come to us and they are from Scappus, St. Helens, um, Centralia, Morton. Um, uh, Iwaco, it's very difficult to make contact with providers there. To, um, be able to provide care to their youth while they're in our custody. Um, and also for me to know their community to help them find resources. Uh, the other issues too is the probation staff or maybe even their mental health provider. Can't leave their facility to come to our town. So just like if we were to ship our youth to. Clark County to their facility, it would be very difficult to. You know, provide the services they need. So when they do get released, it's just a smooth transition back into the community.
I assume you'd always do what is in the best interest of the, of the kid. And then you figure out the boundary problems later.
I hope, yes. I mean, if. I, I could see many issues if we were. To contract with another county where our youth were in that county, then. There's transportation issues that, that can present themselves, um. Again, that not, not having that tight to the community in terms of visitation. Um, they're not readily or easily accessible for us to go and conduct our business. So. Those, those will be some obstacles that I could foresee. Yeah. Next slide, please. Um, this slide really gives you the common detention admissions. And so these are the codes that we use when a, a youth comes into detention. Uh, one thing that you don't see here is the actual charge. And I have that data as well. So. But unfortunately, I only have data from twenty twenty, twenty one and twenty two. So. And what I mean by that, I have the top three charges. That, um, a youth would come in and in twenty twenty assault, fourth degree domestic violence was the number one. Uh, malicious mischief, third degree. And, uh, was the second one and theft third was the, the last. The third one. So the top three essentially, and that's not accounting for all the possibilities or. All possible charges that they came in. I'm just simply saying the top three in twenty twenty assault, fourth degree was the top one. When they look at twenty twenty one. Uh, kind of the same theme assault, fourth, domestic violence, malicious mischief in the third degree, and the third one was harassment. I'm assuming these were also domestic violence. I just couldn't see based on the data. The reason I say domestic violence, because those are typically the charges that will get you into, into detention. Um, obviously, if it was a misdemeanor and we didn't have the domestic violence. And if you didn't make points, I say make points because. We still have to do some sort of risk analysis. Uh, and they have to meet a point criteria in order to be detained on a misdemeanor. That's a low level offense. Um, a- and so when I'm looking at these top threes, uh, domestic violence seems to stick out. In twenty twenty two assault, fourth domestic violence, no surprise, malicious mischief, third degree. And harassment. So it was an ongoing theme there. For those three.
So the, the domestic violence, you said. A fourth degree?
Correct. Assault four, uh, domestic violence.
So that means they hit their parents?
Correct.
Or, or a sibling?
Correct. Mainly a, mainly a parent is what look, I mean. It gets tricky with a sibling. Yeah. Next slide, please.
It, it's, it's not clear to me on that, uh, on a previous slide, what? The, the, the top two, two lines there, are they mutually exclusive?
No, so, okay, great question. Probable cause, um, so. Case in point, assault four, a youth, you know, punches a parent a- and so police go. Uh, they do their investigation. It was determined that the youth assaulted their parent. They're bleeding. That's assault for domestic violence and they're, in their mind, they do a probable cause statement. And they will bring them into detention. So what you see there is probable cause statement is typically through an arrest. The court order one, it could be a probation violation. So youth is on probation and they are not. Complying in one shape or form and the judge has determined that a day or two or possibly more days in detention. Uh, would be the consequence and that's when you see them codified as court order.
Ah, okay, because the judge has to be involved with.
Correct.
Okay.
Correct, yes.
So it's kind of like pre-trial and post-trial?
Uh, yeah, exactly. So I mean, probable cause is before trial.
Do you oftentimes have kids in detention? Until they go to trial or, or do they get released beforehand? I don't know how that works. I'm assuming they don't get bailed out, do they?
Well, I can paint a scenario and that same scenario solve for youth punches a parent, they come to detention. Uh, they're supposed to have a court hearing within twenty four hours. Uh, that is not, obviously not within a holiday or weekend. So the next available court hearing. And then at that court hearing, it's determined whether there should be some sort of bond or release on their own personal recognizance. Um, in, in some, in some cases where the, where the, uh, alleged. Crime is so heinous that may require a high bond or may require a no bond. Then yes, they will stay in detention until that case or their bond changes. It gets re- I think. They'll stay there until the case gets resolved or the bond changes.
Thanks.
Next slide, please. Uh, this is our average daily population. Uh, these are the numbers.
Doesn't that seem high to you? Compared to what we've. We might have.
The last three years, no, that's kind of right about in the last three. Nineteen and twenty, I think that's a little bit more familiar from what I remember before.
Yeah.
So combination of COVID and.
Yeah.
You, you're saying that like nineteen was in twenty nineteen and that number is, is about what you.
Yeah, that's.
Yeah, okay.
More familiar with that. I remember getting concerned when they started dropping down to a dozen or less.
So how do you?
And imagine. Was it twenty twenty one that we were taking care of Lewis County's kids?
Yeah.
And that was, so that was even.
Yeah.
So Calis Counties were even lower.
Yeah.
Yeah. So how do you?
Well, even Lu- and I'm sorry for the interruption, but even Lewis County, they're also going through COVID. That doesn't mean that we were getting all of their kids. So they also had a reduction in numbers as well. Yeah.
Yeah.
So how did you compute the average? Daily population?
So we have our juvenile correction system. We call it J C S. That really is where we. If a youth comes in, that's what we use in terms of a state database to, to say there's this youth enter our detention facility. And so that, that database will keep track until we make a change to that. And that change could be. Well, their release. And so they'll clock in a release. This is when we'll sign them out of detention and clock that release. And so the, the, the juvenile correction system will. Tabulate all their detention time to what? To the minute, right? To the minute. So.
Okay, so basically if I took like in twenty twenty one, because it's a small number. Well, maybe I should do twenty two because it's almost a factor. Of ten. I would say that you, you had, uh. Ten times, let's see. Eight thousand hours a year. So that'd be, I should find eight thousand. Eighty thousand hours of detention. So. There was a person in jail for a total amount of time aggregate with everybody. I shouldn't have said it that way, but eighty thousand hours is, that's how you compute that number?
I am not sure how that's actually computed because we run a query through the juvenile correction system. So we don't really put, you know. Pen to paper and a calculator and try to do all that. I, you know, we, we have that technology to give us that query.
I mean, did these, these averages mean something if you know the distribution? I can see if month A, you had twenty. For the entire month and then. The following month you had nobody, then the following month you had twenty, uh, you, you, you can see where I, I don't know what to make out of the number. Uh, what's significant to me is the high mark. So. Because your institution has to handle. Circumstances by R C W. Uh, what's the maximum you ever had to have? That's sort of meaningful to us because that's what we have to size things for.
Correct. Uh, I, I get that. You also have to take into consideration juvenile detention locally. You know, short term by nature. It, it's no different like than the jail. You know, thi- this is not a prison. They're not going to be here long term.
Right.
Th- this is while things are happening, while things are heated, while. There's great risk to the community, while there's great risk to the individual. So detention by nature is short term. Um, so even our local sanctions, um, are zero to thirty days detention, the possibility of thirty days detention. Obviously, some heinous crimes will require far more than thirty days.
Yeah.
And those are the youth that we don't see in our facility. Those are where juvenile rehabilitation takes jurisdiction and. They will put them in places like that they close down like Nacelle or, or other locations.
Al- although it's not, not at all a requirement, if you could find out how the, how that is computed, I would.
Sure.
Enjoy it.
In, in terms of coverage though, that's determined by state law because we have over fifty thousand people. We have to have twenty four hours, twenty four seven ser- service.
Yes.
Doesn't matter how many kids we have.
But, but the, the, the state law, you, you're, you're talking about hours of operation. How do we know, uh, like, uh, how would we know whether we should have a? Sixteen cell facility or a hundred and twenty eight cell facility? That's not mandated by R C W, is it?
I don't, I don't think the size of the facility is mandated, but.
I think the facility is mandated based on the population of the county.
Well, is it? Okay. They make a recommendation if you have so many people. Of course, those are standards that were made before the truancy laws were changed. So they haven't caught up yet.
Uh, yeah, exactly, yeah.
Yeah, okay. N- next slide, please. You'll see this next slide, it's the same A D P, the same numbers. This is just divided by gender.
Uh, Judge Facet, did you wish to say something?
I was joking that back, back in the day, people would spend a lot of time in detention.
Okay, yeah, okay.
I'm glad that's the thing of the past.
Yeah.
So commissioners, this is the A D P by gender. Again, males tend to dominate. In terms of the numbers that we see over the years.
That's totally.
Probably dominate might not be the most politically correct term to use.
No, that's not.
Might be, they just simply outnumber.
There you go. Yeah. Next slide, please. Uh, this is the average length of stay. So when we're looking at average, average daily population, now we're looking at the average length of stay. Again, this, this goes back to, we're really a, a short term facility. So these are the numbers. Based on, uh, the year.
These are actual, uh, weekends, everything is counted.
Correct.
Clock starts now and just counts.
Correct, yeah. To the very minute. The next slide. It's also separated by gender. I will reserve comments.
So in the transition school, you teach them how to do fractions quite well, right? I got point two hours left.
Probably. Uh, next slide, please. Um, this slide represent pretty much a lot of the detention services that we offer. For youth that are in detention, you know, we, we mentioned school, the school still happens in detention. We have our own classrooms in detention. Uh, mental health clinician, Mr. John London was here. He conducts a lot of one-on-one. Um, meetings with youth, uh, crisis intervention, skill building, that, that sort of stuff. He does continuity of care in terms of when a youth comes in and we try to connect them or reconnect them to the, back to the community. Or they have a specific plan that they should be following, then we'd like to follow that same plan so that they. We can continue with the same level of care if possible, if at all possible. We have our emerg- emergency support shelter that does come by and provide some form of education to our youth. We also work with our master gardeners. We, we do collaborations with them specifically for our work group projects. So we are trying to do more and more collaborations, um, with, with our community and, and. And services, so. Uh, we've even done some cooking classes. Um, earlier we mentioned about, you know, some youth are wanting to be hands on. Unfortunately, there's a lot of youth that, that come into our detention facility. That don't know how to cook for themselves. And so. Hey, we had detention officers who come up with a bright idea to say, hey, why don't? We have them here in our, in our facility. We have them and they need, you know, they, they need to. Learn something instead of just watching television. Let's, let's come up with all these programs. So, so the, what you're seeing here is. A lot of the programs that we, we try to implement and try to provide to the youth while we have them for even that short period of time. Considering it's like a short period of time. Even faith-based services that come by and, and try to perform services too, so. Uh, recreation, we do provide exercise for them. Lots of time to do some recreational stuff. So it's not just typically being in a cell or watching television. We try to get them. Again, while we have them in our, in, in our, in our facility, in our care, we try to. Do the more we can with the limited time that they're there, considering their average length of stay. Through detention, we also do our work group program and, and so some youth that are on probation. That could get sentenced to one day of work or two days and so on and so on. Then they'll, they'll work out of custody, uh, with our work group program. And we're trying to revamp that program so we can do a lot more in our community other than just our local grounds.
Uh, but they're not working with the adults on.
No, no, we, we.
Have to be separated.
No, we will separate, right?
I was, I was thinking the schools have, um, some. Extracurricular robot competitions. And I was thinking, would it be nice if you had some sponsors that could work with the kids? But then you look at that previous slide, they just don't stay with you long enough to really.
One, they don't stay along with us and we also tend to stay away from sharp objects while they're in custody. So. We try not to give them any ideas or weapons. But we, we have had, um, I'm not sure, is it in here or the engineering competitions? We've done.
Yeah.
Things similar, you know, popsicle sticks to try to get them to understand even at a rudimentary, just kind of physics. Uh, it's just, just again, try to get them to be active and use that brain, uh, for other than just watching television. Or just sitting in a cell, so.
Yeah, that catapult thing sounds interesting. Are they getting things in or getting things out? Over the walls. I don't know, have you seen those?
It, it's, it's a little bit, uh, it, you, you mentioned, uh. Uh, the learning is often by doing and I, I, I certainly fit in that category and I've. Adopted the term people, kids, we, or humans tend to learn by osmosis. A perfect example is a two-year-old child can speak, knows how to do. Past, present and future tense, but has never cracked a grammar book. And of course, when we go to high school, they hand us a grammar book to learn another language and it's like, yeah, that's gonna work.
Yeah. Next slide, please. Um, and these are some of the services that we're working on currently. Um, we're trying to do again. Uh, we're trying to do more collaborations with, with other, uh, entities, organizations. Uh, we're trying to do more collaborations with, with other uh entities, organizations. Uh, one. Particular one that we're very excited about was our LCC cooperative that we can do. Um. Uh, we had our detention officer, Nick Potter, who had a brilliant idea to reach out to. LCC to see how we can collaborate. Um, we were more mostly looking at trying to look and tap into their criminal justice. Uh, program to see if we could get any recruits out of that. Uh, so. We were trying to get that angle and we stumbled upon this internship program that we could put potentially do with them. And so there's a mutual benefit where LCC can send us a, a student or two that they feel. Could, could be um. Uh, a good intern for us in which we will take in that internship. And we will have them go through an interview process, we'll do a background check. And essentially do everything that they would normally do in the real world in, in order to try to get a job. And, and so we would run them through that process and eventually do an internship with our detention facility. And uh, start learning the ropes of becoming a detention officer with the potential end goal of. Probably putting our hooks into that person and, and potentially hiring them. Um, they would, they, meaning the student, would get credit, school credits for that. And um. So we just saw the, the, the good possibilities that come, that could come from a cooperative.
So are you talking detainees being interns?
No.
Okay.
No, no, there, there, there's an H, H criteria. And there's a, there's minimum requirements that we're looking for. We're just not nearly really willing to have anyone come in our detention facility. By no means.
Yeah, I, I hope that's always decided on a per-person basis. There's this weird. World we're in now where it's check the boxes or you don't get going and people are not.
No, it, it has to be the right person. Not only that, LCC through this program will provide a, a go-to contact person. At LCC that we can talk to and have that ongoing dialogue because at some point they need to know. Have they done what they needed to do in order to get their credits? Well, conversely, have they done what is necessary from us to continue to be? An intern or we can just fire them and say, thank you, but no, thank you. It's not gonna work for us. But you know, there, there's some excitement there in regards to the, the potential output we can get from them.
Anytime we can step out at a box like this and a person-to-person basis, great plus in my book.
Yeah, thank you. Yeah.
Thank you.
Slide, please. Commissioners, that, that really concludes the overview.
Have a couple of questions or just statement, uh, just for the, for the public, you're. You are part or the superior, you report to Superior Court.
Yes, sir.
Just want the, the. The public basically to know that and uh.
We're a division of Superior Court, yes. We're, yes.
Okay, who would do your annual employee review?
My bosses, the judges.
Bosses. Not the presiding judge only or? Okay, yeah. Yeah, and um. We've, we've covered something that's. Pretty dear to my heart, which is. I, I, I don't understand how we've gotten to the point where we need an ILA in order for people to cooperate. Now I understand when you go across political boundaries of some kind or all kinds of regulations and all that, but it goes back to my question. Take care of the youth first and then figure out what it is. You have to fill in with some. Stuff to check the box, but not the other way around. So uh, you've, you've kind of a, kind of addressed, addressed that. Finance-wise, we didn't touch that at all and it's probably okay not to touch that. It's a burden we, we face. We're. We're finding uh that we're gonna be very challenged in uh. Just yesterday, we. We saw that we're seeing a brick wall ahead of us. And uh, so uh. Your funding is largely from? What source?
Well, we have different funding streams. So for instance, we get um. State grants to provide services and so. This is why we're, we were using the in-house version to try to keep our costs low. And keep the money and the funding to the community and provide more services versus an actual contract service out. Where, you know, the, the bill can, the, you know, the bill can get higher and higher. And so we, we have to some degree, a lot of say in terms of how we allocate those funds in order to provide the services and keep the services. Here in our community.
Yeah.
Not only that, to offset also a lot of um. You know, we, we get a lot of supplies uh through that. We get some training that's covered through that where we don't have to. Tap into the general fund coffers to, for the county to pay for our training.
So, so are you talking about a million dollars in grants?
I wish that was the case.
What are you talking about?
Well, we're right in the. We're right in the midst of budget and I'm looking at those numbers. Uh. I wish I had, I don't wanna give you a number that may not be accurate. But we're talking about probably, you know, three hundred and fifty thousand.
Three fifty.
Yeah.
My, my recollection is we spend about equal amounts between detention and probation. Into the tune of about two and a half. Million a year. That sound about right?
Yeah.
And so that's mostly comes out of the general fund then.
My, I would say a lot of salaries and wages, yes. Yeah.
Well, and maintenance on the buildings and.
Correct.
All that stuff. What else do I have noted down? Yeah, by the way, the, the. In, in your particular situation, I, I really do like that you're bringing your mental health individual under your direct. Supervision. It's your employee.
Correct.
And uh. It's probably a little longer discussion, but I, I think that's the right thing to do. Even though in general, I, I would prefer that we contracted out services so we can, when we face a brick wall, we can just say. Well, we're not gonna renew the contract because I think when we take an employee on, it's an obligation that we should not. Just say, oh, well.
Correct.
It's really important to have that obligation carry through.
So, so I think that the mental health staffing is paid through.
The behavioral health, yes. Yes. That's how we.
Designated.
That's how we designate that funding, yeah.
Yeah.
And I think at one time we had allocated two.
We do, we.
There, so.
The, the need is not there now and so.
Although it's, sounds like there's enough work for two.
Although Mr. London would like some more help because I know we, we are stretching him in every direction, but you know, I. Have to do what the right thing to do is currently look at our numbers, look at everything.
We've got uh. Two judges in the audience would either them wanna come up and say anything? No obligation, just. Oh, yeah, please then.
Sure, yes, please.
She was next on the list because she looked more patient than you did.
Hi, my name's Amber Waderski. Um, I started truancy court um in two thousand and one. Um, so at the age of nine years old, um, but my story goes back further than that. So. The first time I met with a judge, um, I was four years old at my dad's sentencing hearing um in Seattle. Um, one of those like big time courthouse's.
Would, it, are, are you having a hard time?
Little hard.
Alright, sorry. It's been a long time since I missed a speech. Yeah.
Deliberately with enunciation, like you want the world to hear.
Okay, okay, cool. We're, we got this. Alright. Um, so my name's Amber Waderski. Um, the first time I entered truancy court, I was nine years old. Um, just because of family issues, so I grew up in a family full of chaos. Um. And so I was kind of known, um, not as myself, but as someone who came from a family. With criminal justice background, so I was not gonna be anything. And I was known like that by teachers. Um, and by everyone pretty much. So at the age of eleven, um, I was walking home from school one day. And I watched, I watched a girl get beat up and that was the first time I went to juvie. For two days and then I had to spend the summer in transition school. Um, when I just watched the fight, I didn't even touch the girl, but the girl only knew my name and. My friend Bianca's. And so that was the start of many more moons to go. So after that, I was just permanently on truancy. Um, so like every week, um. Well, because I didn't believe in myself because nobody else believed in me. So every week I was just running around school and I was. I was kind of one of those tough girls, I guess, that didn't listen. Um. Or was just stubborn, whichever. Um, so I would just kind of tell the teachers that I was not going. And then they would just call Sally Moorhead and so it was kind of a fair trade. But um. Uh, and then um. By the time I was fourteen, I had so many issues because of trauma that I didn't go to counseling for. And that just kept happening in my life because my home life was not, when I went home, I had no power, I had no water. Um, my, when I was thirteen, my mom had a brain tumor, so I pretty much was raising myself. Um. So by the time I was fourteen, I was stealing cars. I was stealing my mom's rent money for alcohol. Um. I was just going downhill. I could even buy alcohol by myself from a store where I lived. And so um, when Trish Skudder came along, my head was so, it was so. Pretty much mental and foggy, mob alcohol that I pretty much was putting into my body like I didn't care. And I just looked at her like another person. I did not like her and. It's funny today because now I can tell her I love my PO and I call her every day. But um. Uh, it took probably about six months. Um, cause every time I saw her, I wasn't going to school and I wasn't listening to her. Um, so she was throwing me in juvie. Um, cause it's still that Becca Bill law, like back then it was seven days. And but over the summer, I wasn't getting caught doing anything, so we got to know each other. And I think one thing that stood out to me was. Um, instead of every worker that I worked with my whole life at school or anything. They're like, oh, how's your family doing? What's going on at home? And instead of making the conversation about my family and my background. She was, we would go to Subway and she would drive past LCC and she'd be like, oh. After you graduate high school, you're gonna start at LCC, right? And I was like, what? No, you might see me doing a GD. And she was like, no, Amber, you're gonna make your PO proud. Um, she's pretty old now, so she might not remember these conversations, but. No, just kidding. Uh. But um, I think that's um busted out to me. So when I was sixteen, I still had the mentality. Um, like I wasn't gonna do anything in life. I'm gonna work fast food and maybe. Help my family pay bills. So I dropped out of school and I was working at Wendy's and I hated it. So I was trying to do my GD. And work. Um, and then I was out of school for so long, cause by that time, the last time I really went to school, I was nine years old. And I, I couldn't even pass the GD test. Like everybody told me GD was so easy. GD is not easy when you don't go to school. So I then went and enrolled myself in the CEO program. And I was able to do four years of school in a year and a half. So it was like the middle of my junior year and I graduated on time. And from there I went and I got my tier degree in criminal justice. And from there, um, I went on my bachelor's degree in human development. And after that, somehow I ended up working in the same schools that I ran from. So now, um. Because I didn't expect to become a teacher, um, I uh. I'm working under emergency certification. So I have to get my, I have to get like the masters and stuff, which is. Cause now I'm like thirty-one years old, so now I'm like trying to work and go to school. So it's a little bit tougher, but I'm working on it. Hopefully one day I'll get another degree. But um. I think um. What changed me um was just having someone. Who actually loved and cared about me because all those other people that I knew did not really care. And it was just another meeting. Um, after I graduated high school and after I turned twenty-one, they were taking me to bars like. And it wasn't a big deal, but um, my PO, she always stayed true to ethics. And she was the parent I needed. Um, and so that's, that's what I got.
It, it is um. All about the kind of relationships that can be built. And uh, it's, it's great to have a staff that has the kind of talent that reaches out. That's what makes it work. And, and congratulations on a, um. A great, great story, great experience and the attitude to pay it forward. That's awesome.
Yeah, as much as I get angry at Judge Basher because he puts me in an uncomfortable position. I always have to remember. He cares and that's what makes the difference. And so the uncomfortable thing is, I, I know. It's trying to deal with the budget and trying to see the resources are not infinite and. And we're in a society now where we think the answer to everything is the dollar. Well. It isn't. It's the people, the people, but people have to eat too. And so you, you've got to have a payroll. You have to have. Your mental health person on there. Uh. So I, i- it's my off-handed way of thanking. You folks for actually doing the only thing that will be successful. And I know that from a very personal basis also, although that shouldn't be necessary, just takes you to, takes you to look around. Uh, nobody wants to let somebody else. Yeah, we, we have to, we can't help somebody else if we can't help ourselves and, and there's a reality that. Uh, people put a lot of effort into, can't let them down.
Well, thank you for having me. Um, I hope to be back more anytime you guys can call. I'll come do another speech. It'll be better next time.
That may be enough for your regret.
Alright.
Alright, thank you.
Thanks, dear.
Algingmas?
Oh, there we go. Sorry.
No, I, I won't take up too much of your time.
Oh, my time is your.
Patricia Facet, good to see everyone. Um, just as a kind of a initial comment. I started my career in Calz County initially in two thousand and three and I spent. Probably eighty-five percent of the time I, as an attorney in juvenile court. So uh, I actually was a prosecuting attorney when this uh Waderski started her. Her stint in the juvenile uh system. And I prosecuted cases in juvenile court till about two thousand and nine, then became a defense attorney in two thousand and eleven. Doing primarily juvenile court. So juvenile is um. It's a very special place for me and I'm now the juvenile presiding judge, which is just in. Kind of trippy to think about occasionally, but um, it's uh, the type of services that they offer, the things that they provide, it's. Um, it's hard to really kind of list. And I think uh, Mr. Moye did an amazing job of that. There was a few things that I just wanted to touch base on. Uh, to clarify a few things, uh, House Bill fifty-three ninety. Was a staggered approach to cut the. Kind of slowly pull the teeth out of uh truancy and at-risk youth. And uh, in my experience for. Six, sixteen years of practice in juvenile court. Um, the chin's petitions often stemmed from those types of situations. So you'd have. Uh, you'd meet a truancy client when we used to represent truance. Uh, truance are no longer represented by attorneys. Uh, you'd find out they were in a home with no running water. You'd find out things about them. Uh, and an attorney would often file those uh chin's petitions on behalf of that youth. Same to be said in um, in at-risk youth situations, they, you come to find out that. The parents blaming the child for everything and the parents may be more of the issue. You can file a uh chin's petition there. Additionally, it's uh, it's kind of a dependency fallout. You can file a, uh, chins petition there. Additionally, it's, uh, it's kind of a dependency fallout program. Um, and I don't want to necessarily call out, uh, DCYF, but a lot of times you'll see that they don't file dependencies on teenagers. So they kind of just let them sort themselves out and that's where, uh, we get chins, but we have to have the people in the right places to catch those things to be able to file those types of petitions. Um, and I think that the we, I remember, uh, practicing in front of Commissioner Dennis Marr and truancy cases and we would have children in detention for at least seven days at a time. Uh, there was a point where there were criminal contems being filed in truancy cases. Kids were going to detention for thirty days and we're still in a kind of the same situation. So I don't know that that kind of segues into my next comments. Legislature is changing so much with, with regards to juvenile court, uh, courts specifically. Uh, I was talking to George earlier and things that we have to remember. Um, as of July first, twenty twenty-three, juvenile sex offenders no longer are required to register as sex offenders because of the new bill. Um, there is, there was a freeze on warrants. We couldn't issue warrants for juveniles during COVID uh, under the Supreme Court emergency orders. So a lot of those numbers, we say COVID numbers, but there were real, um, things that were implemented, uh, by the Supreme Court during that timeframe that kind of hogtied what we were able to do. So you had to make very specific findings and that the child, uh, was a danger to themselves or others. Uh, and that that was an immediate danger. There was certain protocol to, to issue a warrant during, I don't know, was that an eighteen or twenty month period of time? I think those emergency orders were in place. So we're talking, I mean, I don't want to say things were running amok, but things maybe were, there, there was a lot of things that we couldn't control as much as we wanted to. Uh, so there was a recent Supreme Court case, which uh, I talked to anybody at, uh, detention or probation and they'll know my frustration uh, that changed the requirements for DNA collection for juveniles, uh, that so, um, it's no longer every felony in a juvenile case that they collect DNA. And I'm not necessarily saying that that's a bad thing. It just, I think sets an interesting precedent and that's what we're working with now. Um, as of July, was it July first, all juveniles are required to have a parent or guardian with them when they're interrogated or an attorney. So I think that's going to impact the type of charging, uh, we receive, the type of police reports we're going to receive, the uh, number of arrests that are going to happen, uh, because let's face it, children often can tell on themselves, especially in front of an authority figure. So I think that's going to impact how many cases we see because cases are going to get harder to prove when a juvenile isn't confessing the entire case to, uh, law enforcement when they're confronted. So there's a series of challenges. Uh, I think our juvenile probation department and detention department are phenomenal in their response to these things, phenomenal in their individual care. I would never, uh, question their care of each and, and looking at each kid individually. Um, I'm sure you're all aware, we had a, a probation officer retire that served our county for twenty-four years, I think, uh, last week and uh, she had a list of kids that signed specific ROIs so she, they could stay in touch with her. Um, so to say that we don't offer individualized care, we absolutely do and we have a really great people that are doing. So thank you very much for your time. I, I'll answer any questions you have.
Yeah.
So I am curious as to your opinion of the value of school resource officers. Have they made an impact from your perspective?
You, you know, it's, it depends on, uh, the officer and it depends on the climate. I've, I've heard recently that schools are not wanting to refer as much from, from schools. Is that accurate? I don't, I don't know what the data is, but I, I, I feel like, um, resource officers maybe are yeah, trending to be underutilized in certain schools. Uh, and I don't know if there's protocol that the schools are trying to meet that, you know, uh, so I, I, I don't, I'm not as informed as I probably should be to answer that question.
I'm sure.
But I've heard, I've heard there's a trend that they're not as utilized as they used to.
For them during COVID with numbers, kids weren't in school even. So I, I, I get that part. It's a matter of ramping back up, figuring out the new rules and adapting and, and we see the numbers increasing, but, um, yeah. I'm just curious whether they've made an impact for you.
I, I feel compelled to say a couple of things, if not more. Um, we talked about the fundamental problems where the whack-a-mole analogy. And, uh, um, when I hear things that don't pay proper homage to the fact that there's some underlying issues, I tend to want to say it. I don't expect anything, but I think if you say things enough over time, I learn from my children. I can't get them to think or do the right things today, but they hurt me. Maybe in a week, maybe a month, maybe in five years. It does take. It wouldn't if I didn't speak up. So in, in that mode here, I heard, uh, we, we've got to get through our heads, um, uh, the money is not the answer. Uh, uh, my, my dad grew up in a way upstate New York. He had no heat. That there was only one room that had heat. That was the main room. His bedroom had no heat. He told me, uh, he was salt of the earth kind of individual. He told me that the mercury in his, the thermometer in his bedroom froze one night. I mean, we're talking about minus forty degrees. Um, and, uh, when I was growing up, putting food on the table was a very important thing. Uh, was the orders, those were the orders of the day. I lived in a place with no electricity, no running water. My sister and I shared the bed. We had many, many arguments because we slept head to foot and get your foot out of my, you know, that kind of thing. Uh, so let's focus on the fundamental issue, which is we do not have that I think the fundamental is we've destroyed the family and we don't pay enough attention to our kids. We try to let somebody else manage them. Uh, we, and, uh, it's, it, the destruction of the family is a fundamental issue. So our policies, while we have to live here today under circumstances we have here today, we have to take into account, like the young lady said, she found people that cared. And that boils down to having a family is a responsibility and we, we really have messed it up. Okay, that was point number one. Two is something that I've had discussions with Judge Basher and he's very tolerant with me on this. From here, we have the bully pulpit. That's probably, in my opinion, that's one of the more useful things I can do. And that bully pulpit includes that the legislature is populated by lawyers. Laws are made by lawyers and we often hear lawyers complaining about the legislature and I'm saying, you guys are all members of the same club called the bar. As much as I put my neck out here, I really want to see our court system put its neck out and say, you know, this is not w- w- working. These aren't good things. And I know that's a very difficult position to be in because you're not supposed to legislate from the bench. I know that. But somehow we've got to fix a system that isn't doing very well. And, uh, the last one is actually a question.
Sure.
Uh, the rampant shoplifting seems like it would be an attraction for the young people. What's your thinking about that? It, it seems like there's relative impunity to shoplifting.
Well, eh, with the, that's it, that's it, is a good question and there's a lot, a lot of responses I could give you. Um, there's, there's a lot of need in this community and, and, and I, and I guess I should circle back. Uh, ha- not having heat in the home or running water doesn't mean you don't have family that cares for you and is trying to care, to take care of you. So, um, they're not always mutually exclusive. Uh, they can be. I think that, um, we are changing as a society and there's a lot of need for immediate satisfaction. Um, I want it and I want it now. And, uh, I think there could be, uh, many reasons why it's happening, but I think there, there is a lot of theft. I think Mr. Moy said it was the third, number three on the list for the last three, three years in a row, or at least one of the last three years. I think harassment overtook it. Um, I don't know why it's happening. Uh, I mean, I have, I can guess why it's happening. Uh, but, but there's, um, I think there's that immediate gratification that kids, especially kids have. Um, there are not a lot of forethought involved in a lot of decision-making with kids. Um, and so we see that as a huge issue. It's a, a theft in the third degree is a gross misdemeanor, excuse me, a simple misdemeanor. So that's zero to thirty days in detention. They're not going to get anywhere near that if their first offense. If it's their first offense, they'll go to a diversion. Um, but we have certain, uh, places like Winco, Walmart, if you get trespassed from there and then you go back and you steal a candy bar, that can be a burglary. So there's, there's ways that it escalates and there's, you know, surpassing court secu- or excuse me, not court security, uh, security, uh, systems in stores. So whether that's you're lining your bag with tin foil or you're cutting off tags on things that are going off when you're exiting the store, there's uh, an, an elevated charge for that now. So there is a response, I think, to some of those, um, simple thefts. There's now ways for those to be charged as more serious, especially when they are continuing to, uh, occur within a certain individual's history. So we're, there are, there are attempts to change that, but I think it's, it's one of those things we're always going to see, whether it's, you know, the atomic fireball that I may have taken when I was five years old from the drugstore or it's the, you know, the newest PlayStation game from Target. It's one of those things that I don't know we'll ever get rid of. But there are, there are ways that were there. I think we're trying to combat that.
I appreciate that. It, it won't help the fact that they're swayed into doing something that I think most of us inherently know that's not the right thing, but everybody's doing it.
Peer pressure, peer pressure is huge for juveniles, you know, and whether it's peer pressure, uh, necessity, or just impulsivity. You know, if they're in the right place at the right time and they see something, uh, I think, you know, unfortunately, some of those kids feel they can act on.
We were all young once and we, we were perfect though.
We tried to be, I'm sure.
Yes.
All right. I appreciate your time. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else? I've been trying.
Wanted to respond to it. Judge Basher presiding for Superior Court, for Superior Court. Just to, I wanted to, uh, comment on a couple of, uh, questions that came up that I didn't hear, uh, really come up. One of the things that did impact juvenile court as well, Superior Court was the Blake decision because it affected juveniles as well as adults. Uh, so all those possession cases were immediately affected. Had one actually that happened the day after it was, it came out of the, the Supreme Court had to dismiss the charges. So that's, uh, that's another factor that goes into those case loads that we had. Um, one of the other things that is kind of on the horizon, there's been several attempts by the legislature to pass a bill to include nineteen and twenty-year-olds in juvenile court jurisdiction. Uh, that's not dead at this point. There's a study, I think, happening that was funded, uh, I think the last time they tried. That, that may be on our horizon and how that's going to impact juvenile courts. I, I really haven't, I don't think anybody can assess that at this point. I, the one comment that was, or question came up about what did we do when our numbers went down? Uh, we didn't let anybody go, but we didn't fill a position that was vacated. So we did respond to that by not not filling a position because we didn't have the, we didn't have the need at that time. So, uh, that's just a little bit more response to that. One of the things I did want to comment about, and that has to do the discussion with evidence-based programs, um, drug courts and evidence-based program. Um, it, it's a successful program in part because it's been studied and we learned how to do it effectively. We've also learned that if you don't do it correctly, you do damage to people. So the evidence-based thing is really important. For a lot of years, y'all probably, and most everybody here probably remembers the Derek Cars running around town with the big signal on them. That turned out to be a really bad idea because we didn't have research. It was a great idea and then it did bad things, scared straight. Bad, a bad program, once they did studies of it. So evidence base is an important thing. We find out, we do a program and we talked about the one promising program. Those are programs that we have some research that looks like it's going to be a good program. The only way we find out if they're really a good program is we, we keep trying and then we find out good program, not so good, we move on to something else. And really the last thing is, uh, just a kind of personal, I know, I know you love anecdotes.
I beg your pardon?
And I know you love little, little anecdotes.
Oh, the anecdotes.
So, um, Amber, when I first met her, was the most obstinate teenage girl I'd ever met. She sat across from me, I'm on the bench, she's on the table. And she pretty much said, not gonna do that. And several years later, I had the privilege of being invited and being able to attend both of her first two graduations, which was pretty, pretty fun. The other thing, and this happened just yesterday, I went to the National Night Out over at Kelso and I'm just wandering around, minding my own business, trying not to bump into anybody that knows me. You know, a young man walked up and I didn't recognize him and he says, Judge Basher. Uh-oh. Turns out, uh, it was somebody, I'm not going to say his name because I don't have his permission today, but basically somebody who spent a lot of time in front of me, um, over the years, uh, not a bad kid, just a kid who had a lot of problems. And what he had to say to me was, uh, thank you for the tough love. So the stuff we do out there impacts people and it's really important. So any questions?
I, I thank you and, uh, I am impressed all the way along and it's because a human factor really comes out and I consider a lot of what I see as inhumane, the, the, the stuff we end up with. Uh, I won't say anything because we're on the opposite side of that, but laws that are, do not take human nature into account are doomed to fail. And you're at the end of that line in some sense, so you've got to deal with that and I, I can't sit here and say, well, I would do this and it would work better because I can't and I am a critical observer. It's just, 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 just my nature. So I, I want to thank you all for that individual effort you place. One thing that came out of last, uh, when was it that, uh, you, you spoke here, George, last, anyhow, it was last week? Mine's a terrible thing when you get to be ancient. And, uh, um, it was pretty clear to me that there is a multiplier factor that is essential. We don't have the resources to deal with everybody one-on-one. So when Amber goes out there and affects three people, that's a multiplier of three. And if those three and so forth, then it, it's just, we have to do it that way. Otherwise we're, we're just not going to make it.
Questions?
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Appreciate the opportunity to present. Thank you.
Thank you. I haven't noticed anybody from the public with their hands up. Uh, there are a couple of people here, or three people who haven't spoken. Do they, do they wish to speak? It, it's not that I'm trying to check the box, but there are, they, they can't record your voice that way.
Uh Court Services Manager, Chris Rehernson from Juvenile Department. Uh no further comments. I think Mr. Moya spoke very elegantly with uh the regards to the juvenile department. So I s-. Well, about about me, I started out with the Adult Corrections, hired me, uh went to work for juvenile detention. Uh for some years and then uh. Started and uh got hired on by the probation department after that and has been with juvenile department ever since. So.
Okay, let me ask you a question. Uh how would, what would be the the foremost thing that comes to your mind from your. Personal uh feelings, if you will, between. Working in the adult corrections and working in in juvenile?
I started, like I say, Adult Corrections hired me because Adult Corrections took over the juvenile department back in two thousand and eight. Um then I went to work for detention. I never really worked for adults, but they were doing the hiring uh for the detention center.
Oh, I see.
When I worked with the, at the Adult Corrections, I work with youth for a reason.
I'm sorry, was it?
I work, I work with youth for a reason. Um you got to catch them when they're young.
Okay, thank you.
I also like the way that uh Miss, you know, Commissioner, you had spoke, Miss Widereski uh. Getting them back out in the public. Effects. Five to ten other youth, other adults, to get them right on the right path.
Yeah, and and the thing I would want to do is encourage you all to continue because I I, anybody who's had kids. And anybody who tries to communicate stuff, anybody's, when a school teacher knows you, it takes repetition, it takes exposure, it takes caring. And common sense. Which is terribly, totally misnomer because it's uncommon these days.
Mr. Moya did touch on the C map process, uh which is the uh case analysis that probation now has to, you know, that we sit down with the youth that used to be a. Ten to fifteen minute process. Now it's over an hour, uh depending on how many cases there are. Um then working with the case plans uh with the youth and family. Um trying to get that buy-in and using those motivational and regional skills and then. Coming back weekly, uh going and doing all those home visits. You know, and we've touched on that as well as some of our youth, when we walk into the home and we see dirt floors. And we see uh. Youth sleeping on pallets. My first home visit was with Miss Scudder back, I believe in two thousand and ten. I was uh just riding along with her, walked into a youth's house, dirt floors, um everybody in the family uh sleeping on pallets. So it kind of hits home a little bit when you get out of the realm of going home to your bed and then going out to see what what is actually going on.
Thanks.
No, I was thinking, uh uh your colleague right next to you hasn't. You don't have to say, you don't have to be on the spot, just.
A- afternoon. Uh Commissioners and general public, uh Nick Modlin, Detention Manager. Uh I have nothing further to say. Thank you, Bill.
That that unknown person over there hasn't spoken yet. Okay, well, I I've stalled enough. I I usually apologize for taking much longer than the scheduled time, but. I don't know, maybe my colleague feels the same. Uh we we've got to talk to people.
We always pick up im- important things. I mean, we we know about the programs and yet uh. We do tend to forget and things do change, so. It's important.
Anything? I've got to look at my agenda to see that the next thing is citizen comments, although we always take citizen comments as they come. We have none, so I can check that box. And executive session, we have none. So thank you, everybody. I say that we rejoin.